This video presentation is made possible by Brewster Services Group.
If I could call our meeting to order at 6:30, we have two special guests tonight. It's going to have our invocation and our pledge. We have Pastor John Henson from Blairland Baptist Church, and then we have Sergeant Gary Norman from the United States Army with us tonight. Thank you, guys, for being here and your service, not only to our community but to our country. So we're going to ask everyone to stand, and we'll have the invocation and the pledge.
Please join me in prayer.
Of all the religions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Again, gentlemen, thank you for your service to our country and our community. Roll call, please.
Mayor Harris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dixon?
Here.
Councilmember Vivens?
Here.
Councilmember Brewster?
Here.
All present. Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loudoun City Council. My name is Mayor Jeff Harrison. On behalf of the council and the staff, I want to welcome you here tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennesseean the right to attend city council meetings and to observe how their government is doing business. We appreciate that each of you have taken time from your own schedules to be here tonight to see how your city government works. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you don't have a copy, they's up here on the podium. You can pick one up there. This agenda is your guide to the topics that we're going to discuss tonight. In order to conduct efficient, businesslike meetings, the council has adopted specific rules to follow. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, assure that all points of view are heard and considered, and to provide for common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to the place on the agenda entitled Citizens' Input, where anyone who has signed in to speak is encouraged to do so. Also, we'll let those that's joined online, if they want to speak, will unmute your mic. We do, however, ask that you wait until you've been recognized. After being recognized, please approach the podium to address the council and observe three simple rules. At the beginning of a presentation, please state your name for the records. Please address all your questions to the chairman, and avoid the use of improper language, profanity, and other inappropriate conduct. Once the Citizens' Input portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the remainder of the agenda. You are welcome to stay and observe the meeting, but be advised that public comments may be limited. We ask that everyone remember we're doing the people's business here tonight, and it's a very important responsibility for all of us. Please help us do this business by observing the rules we've established for our meetings, and again, want to welcome you to our meeting tonight, and we're glad you're here. Everyone has a copy of the agenda. It was emailed, and I think given hard copy, so I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mayor, I got a question on the agenda.
Manager Ross at Loudoun Utilities, well, that's just information, kind of, I guess, sharing information as what's going on with utilities, correct?
Yes, this is the right hand speaking to the left, and it's really a formality. What the Utility Board decides to do, and Vice Mayor Dixon can speak to this, because he was present and approved it. It's a $10 million transfer from excess gas funds to the Water Department to fund specific improvement projects for the Water Department. The Water Department is underfunded and is looking to take on a good bit of debt, upwards of $20 million, and this would eliminate approximately half that debt. Chris Frye was involved in negotiations with the Comptroller's Office and outside council, and I think he'll speak to the specifics of the agreement.
Yes, I regret that that was left off the workshop agenda.
Okay. What about item two?
Item two is essentially your request, Councilmember Brewster. You know, you wanted me to look into what the district could offer in terms of planning services in the future, and worked with Terry Babowski to put together an on-call service agreement.
That was last year I asked that.
Yeah, and it's come up now, and I think it's just timely that we have this discussion. You know, Terry Babowski, he's the executive director of the East Tennessee Development District. We had several conversations on the phone and in person. I just asked him to reduce it to writing, so that it could be a formal agreement that you can consider. There's no request that this be passed tonight. I just wanted to get it in front of you. Planning came up, much to my surprise, you know, really in the workshop, and this is really my reaction to that. I want there to be an adequate assurance of, you know, proper service should the city take on additional planning responsibilities. The staff of the East Tennessee Development District is willing to help us on an hourly basis. The quoted fee is $75 an hour. Why have that? Well, sometimes things aren't routine. Sometimes it's not just a subdivision plat. Sometimes it's not just a commercial building site review. Sometimes it's annexation of a neighborhood, you know. Sometimes it's de-annexation. These things can get involved, and we just didn't want to overwhelm staff. We wanted to have, you don't do hard things alone, and we wanted to have good people on call should the need arise.
I think this is just a safety net in case we do get...
No, we're authorizing a contract with these people, and having them get brought to workshop.
As needed.
He emailed it to me. Do you sit on it, or do you reveal it? And I thought I'd go ahead and reveal it.
I mean, if it's your request, we can certainly move that to the workshop. If you'd like to make that form of a motion, and council agrees, we can certainly do that.
I just don't want to go into an agreement right now.
Okay. All right. All those in favor to move that to the July workshop, say aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. So we'll remove that one from the agenda.
I like, you said the first one is $10 million?
Yes.
The utilities.
Yeah. I mean, that's $10 million taxpayer dollars we need to look at.
It's $10 million ratepayer dollars.
And it's something they have already voted on, and, you know...
Yeah, but we have to sign the contract to do it. It's, part of it says, given to the IDB Board in here, so we're giving the $10 million to the IDB Board, up to $10 million?
I think that...
Those were...
Chris Frye, can you...
Not going to be distributed when the change... ...be read.
It's only...
I understand.
Right. It's only as those costs are actually incurred by Loudoun Utilities for the construction of the water improvements will the money be used, will be transferred to IDB for IDB to reimburse LUB for those expenses.
Why are we funneling it through the IDB Board?
Because...
Go ahead.
That's the vehicle that state law allows for us to transfer funds from the Gas Department to the Water Department. Otherwise, you couldn't do just a straight from fund to fund transfer. There's a provision in state law that allows, under what's called the Revenue Bond Law, that allows the utility to use funds specifically from the Natural Gas Fund for public improvement projects, as long as they partner with an economic development agency.
So the Gas Department can't just directly give it to the Water Department?
That's right. If they could, that would have been the preferred option. This is the way we found to accomplish the goals without having to take on $20 million worth of debt for the Water Department that would have affected the ratepayers.
Could I ask why this wasn't brought to workshop?
It just got left off at the last minute. We passed, you know, we passed this LUB meeting last month, and knew it had to go to IDB, and I forgot to get it on the agenda for the workshop.
I would feel more comfortable with it being in a workshop first, because I think there's going to be some questions about that.
$10 million's a lot of money to sign off on without knowing all the details on it.
Is there any ramifications for that to the Utility Board?
It'll just, I believe it'll just delay the debt issuance that the Water Department's looking to put out.
The right structure that was passed by the Utility Board was based on this transfer, so if this transfer does not go through for some reason, it would impact the water ratepayers in the upcoming budget. That, if you want to allow more time to discuss it, that's the scope of the agreement.
Yeah, I also think $10 million is taking it from our ratepayers without discussion with city council. I just, I don't see it.
This is out, multiple hearings were held before our Utility Board. Our Utility Board approved this. It's the opinion of Vassberry and Sims, our bond attorney, that the city should sign off this as well. If you desire to delay this another month, I think it looks valuable to delay it. So we will answer any questions you have now, or answer any questions the second week of July.
Any questions that they can answer now at this point?
There's probably a lot of confusion in the audience right now. State law allows gas funds, gas funds specifically, to be spent on public economic development projects. It's a provision of state law, and you're not allowed to do that in the Electric Department. TBA says no. Water Departments, Sewer Departments, you know, they have some oversight from state Utility Boards. Gas fund is different. Why is it different? It's because gas was deregulated back in the 1990s. So, but Tennessee, the General Assembly decided in its infinite wisdom that gas funds could be spent on infrastructure projects. The infrastructure projects identified in the Water Department is an expansion of your water treatment plant, 24-inch river crossing to go across the Tennessee River, as well as various pump stations and other improvements throughout the Water District System totaling some $20 million.
But the IDB Board, they would be putting the contracts out?
No. This is all, LUB is still going to be managing the project. The IDB is going to be a vehicle for a fund transfer.
This was all reported in the Loudoun News Herald, I think quite adequately by Ms. Wright, and, you know, in the news article, we made very clear that there's multiple economic development boards that we could have gone through as a conduit. The reason we chose the IDB is it is 100% appointed by the city council. EDA has county appointments, Lenore City appointments. Just made good sense to use the IDB.
Is there any other questions that we could answer tonight, that we could leave this on the agenda and prove it tonight? Questions could be answered here? We have Attorney Frye, who's very instrumental in it as well. We have Chairman Campbell here as well from the Utility Board. Can answer any questions?
It just serves me that $10 million we forgot to discuss in the workshop. That's no good business.
We can answer further questions in July.
If that's the pleasure of the council, someone make a motion in a second.
Well, are there any projects that's fixing to kick off soon?
Well, it's all tied into the rate structure that LUB just passed. If it weren't for this fund transfer, then everyone's water rates would have gone up a lot more on July 1 than what LUB voted to adopt. So as far as projects, it's not, nothing that's going to start next month. It's just it delays the time period for the debt issuance, which will delay the time period for construction.
No, no one is unwilling to talk about it next month. No one's arguing with you here, sir.
Yes, it's just the pleasure of the council.
I just have a question.
Any more questions about it? So do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
We adopt the agenda.
That's with the removal of item two, as we talked about. Is that what your motion is, Vice Mayor Dixon? With the removal of number two of the resolution, which was the contract with East Tennessee Development District?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed with the removal of number two under resolution. We'll put that on the July workshop. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor for approving the adoption of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, motion carries. Agenda is adopted. Next item on the agenda is Citizens' Input. We have three that signed in. Roger Nash?
I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, sorry, okay. John Evans from Committee of 100. You probably just thought you signed up that you were here, tendence.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. That's all right. Welcome, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. I'm John Evans. I'm president of the Committee of 100. I just came here tonight to restate from the Committee of 100. The LC Committee of 100 has as a main goal to support and influence economic and community growth in Loudoun County. Our membership is over 150 strong and consists of business owners, professionals, and community leaders. I'm here today to voice our support for the continued growth and development of our county. The three areas of growth that all work in unison are entry-level housing, to draw new families to our community, as well as retain bright young residents looking for a start in their home county. New retail businesses to enhance the area's livability, and new and expanded industry to create new jobs. All of these are semient, in that each, as each of these areas grow, it will spawn development in other areas. This exponential expansion will increase the tax base, which will allow funding for much-needed infrastructure and help sustain a better quality of life for our current and future residents. It is our desire to urge all our community leaders to be diligent in developing a new growth plan for our county, as the current plan is outdated and needs to be reevaluated. In doing so, it will benefit in decision-making and allow developers looking to invest in our community, to better understand how we have designated our growth patterns. It will also give needed guidance to local officials trying to make the best decisions for their constituents by developing an updated plan to identify growth areas for different aspects of residential, commercial, and business development. The community at large will have more peace of mind when making decisions about where to live, work, and play. Within each city and throughout the county, there are growing needs for entry-level housing, and we have the opportunity in each of these communities to create and design plans that will attract developers, new businesses, and new residents to our beautiful place here on earth. It is incumbent upon us all to carefully consider the needs of our residents and business community, and remove inadequate roadblocks which are currently inhibiting growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I think we have Mr. Bo Carey, who's going to talk about the 150th Year Celebration.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm Bo Carey. I'm the chairman of the 150-year celebration for Loudoun County, and just wanted to give city council an update. We, on Saturday, had a virtual Facebook event. We initially had planned for June 20 to be a public rally, public time capsule event at the southwest corner of the Loudoun County Courthouse, and with COVID-19 and social distancing and safety concerns, obviously, we couldn't do that. So I wanted to clear up a few misconceptions. One is, as most of you probably know, we, the old time capsule from 1970 was exhumed, and it was done early, and there was an article in the News Herald about it this past week, actually, an op-ed opinion by Ruth McQueen explaining that. If you didn't know, unfortunately, it was not even in a vault. It had been put in a pine box, and water had seeped in from underneath and above in over 50 years. There was very, very little left, so we think we made the right move there. We did, as I said, had a Facebook event. Mayor Jeff was there, representing Loudoun, and we had a very limited number of people, including Dr. Paul Breakable and Honorable Judge Harvey Sproul from 1970, who had been the county judge who were part of the committee that actually buried the capsule back in 1970. But unfortunately, the Facebook overheated, or whatever, the cameras about 22 minutes into our hour and a half celebration, and it didn't make it. But the good news is it was recorded, and I want to make you all aware of something that our county historian, Darryl Tuck, a Loudoun resident, has put together, which is the Loudoun County History Project. I encourage all of you to go to YouTube to the Loudoun County History Project. He's a couple of great interviews with a number of local Loudoun counties, including my father and former Mayor Amber. Has some great comments and reports in there. But we will be putting the entire hour and a half ceremony on, within a week or two, on our Loudoun County History Project, which you can find on YouTube. I also want to say, though, that there's a lot, a number of people that were disappointed that they weren't invited, or that we didn't have a huge event, or that we didn't spend two or three hours digging up that thing, which would have been a huge disappointment Saturday. The two things I want to reassure is, number one, the remaining items that survived from 1970 will be on display. They will be, I think that you can, within about a week, can see them at the Loudoun branch or the Loudoun County Library. The second thing I want to say is, we do intend, provided that COVID-19 subsides, we do intend to have a big public rally at the southeast corner of the courthouse lawn, where the marker was from 1970, if not somewhere in the downtown, and we invite all of you and all of the public to come and attend that. And then the last thing is, we are now putting together the 2070 time capsule, and everybody in Loudoun County will have an opportunity to put something into that. It's sponsored by the Greenback Historical Society. It will have, you'll all be able to send in something by email. Our email address is 150yearsofloco, that's Loudoun County. You can go to our Facebook or Twitter under the same name, or our website, 150yearsofloco, and get more information. But you'll have, if you don't do Facebook, or if you don't do email, you can do snail mail, and we'll have the address available at the Greenback Historical Society. So everybody will have a chance to put a family picture. County Mayor Bradshaw is going to write a letter to the county mayor of, whoever it is, in 2070. I would encourage you to do the same, and all of you to do the same, to the council that's here in 2070. So everybody will have a chance to participate in the new time capsule. We don't intend to put the old or the new back in the ground. Lesson learned. We intend to display it in a public place, hopefully in the new renovated courthouse, but we'll see. So we are challenged, we've been fortunate enough to recover the old charred pine beams from the courthouse, possibly 148 years old. We have asked the Teleco Village Woodworkers Group to build us some cabinets and a new time capsule to display the old and to house the new, and hopefully show those off in our courthouse, or in an annex, or some public place. It may end up here at City Hall. But that's our plan. We hope everybody will participate. There will be an opportunity for a public rally gathering to celebrate our county, and that's planned for November 14. Does anybody know what day Veterans Day is this year?
November 11.
It just occurred to me, we may be treacherously close, it's the 11th. So it'll be three days of Veterans Day. We'll be on the back end of the courthouse lawn, they'll be on the front. So anyway, I don't think there's a problem with that. So stay tuned, we'll try to keep everybody updated. Thank you.
Thank you, Bo. I did see one article in there that was the youngest person to ever get a bank account. I think it was little Jimmy Greenway. After one hour of being born, he had a bank account.
Still have the same one.
Still got the same account. One hour old, he had a bank account. Thank you, Bo. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from May 26, 2020. Everyone did receive a copy of those. Attorney Frye, did you have a chance to look at them?
We're going to check.
I'm just going to announce, anyone who has the opportunity to unmute and speak, if you would like. You have the power to do that, so. I'm not seeing anything change, and I think we're okay.
Okay, thank you. I forgot about him.
You're good.
Okay. Attorney Frye, about the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've reviewed them. They appear accurate to me, but I, my audio at the beginning of the meeting was a little off, so.
A little fuzzy there. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Dixon made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Vivens. Ms. Vivens, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries, okay. The ordinance for second reading. Ordinance of City of Loudoun, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021. This is on second reading. We had a public hearing with no comments, so I would entertain a motion to adopt the annual budget for this upcoming year.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Do we have a motion to adopt the budget on second reading? Do I have a second?
I'll second one.
Thank you. Councilmember James? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any question? We call for a vote. Okay, with no discussion, no questions, we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Vivens?
No.
Councilmember Brewster?
No.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Read it, too.
Okay. Thank you. Next item for second reading is setting the tax rate for tax year 2020. Andrew Ross, you have anything to add to that? We did have a public hearing.
Well, you know, the ordinance reflects no tax increase, no property tax increase. Since the first reading of the budget, you know, there were requested pay increases for public safety officers, specifically entry-level police officers and firefighters across the board. And just as a fiscal note, the impact of that was some $235,000 as an ongoing expense. And let me give you the history of that, as to why that was requested and why that occurred. We believe it dates back to 1988, when a new formula was put in place. It just applied to the fire department, and so, take for example, if a 1% COLA, cost of living adjustment, were added to the payroll in a year, the fire department only received 60% of it. And the logic was they weren't working all the time. And that has been brought up again and again by the department since the late '80s. I've only been here three years. We stopped utilizing that formula after my arrival. However, there... However, there is, there was an ongoing grievance within the department that they only received partial COLAs over those years. And this is, this adjustment in this budget is a catch-up to essentially bring firefighter pay even on an average annual basis with patrol officer pay. But I want you to know the history behind it, for the record, as to why that took place. There's also an adjustment to entry-level police officers, that's two positions. Those two positions were created some time ago, that definitely predate me. We have a fine police department. There is a waiting list to become a Loudoun police officer, and these two entry-level police officers have been entry-level for many, many years. And it is seen, again, as a wrong, an unfairness within the department, that these patrol officers who've worked many, many years and have much experience in our community are paid at a lower rate of pay. So this other adjustment simply brings, simply brings their pay even with other patrol officers. To say it a better way, takes those two positions and just makes them regular patrol officers. The other change, since the first reading of your budget is a 1% COLA, and all in, all three changes amount to $235,000, we accommodated these requests by adjusting our revenue projections. Our first crack at the budget was done back in March, and there were a lot of unknowns in March. We have since received our sales tax figures for March, April, and May. They're up. They're strong. And so we hope we continue to pull out of the COVID recession. We hope it's, we hope it's short-lived, and the Nike swoosh just keeps climbing on the tail end. But we do feel good about this, and your budget is $8,000 to the good despite these changes. It's a tight budget, but it's, 2020 is a different year, and we've had to deal with a lot of changes, and these are the changes to your budget. Thank you.
Thank you for explanation of those, and Nicole, we always work on that, putting that budget together and implementing those changes. Okay, do we have a motion to set the tax rate for tax year 2020? And that is set at $1.23, 2367. As Manager Ross said, it's no tax increase.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax rate.
Second, thank you, Mr. Brewster. Have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Vivins?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is amending the, on second reading, is amending the Loudoun Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 1, regarding refuse and trash disposal. Again, this comes as a recommendation from our Public Works Director, Ellis Scruggs. We had a public hearing about this. Any clarifications?
Sure. Ellis, since you're right there, do you care to give the crowd just a, just a quick couple of bullet points on the rubbish and trash changes?
Sure. What we're looking for is, when it comes to residents' trash pickup, it'll basically mean using garbage bags, or rather, using loose trash in the garbage bins. Coronavirus pandemic, things we're dealing with, so we'd like all the garbage to be placed in bags going forward. The other thing involves our brush loader. Just some clarification, something, you know, since it's a new piece of equipment to the city of Loudoun, kind of some clarification of where to put the brush, not under power lines, not near fences, clear from automobiles, things like that. Then the other is about construction materials. The existing policy for now stated that you got one free load of brush or contractor materials, or construction materials for free, and then every subsequent load after that was $150. Now we're looking to change that to $75. And the idea there is entice you to use the truck versus, you know, having us pick it up on the side of the road each time. So just, I think it's actually good changes.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. These did come as recommendations from him and his department. He got a lot of this feedback from your workers. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Vivins, do I have a second?
Say again.
Thank you, Mr. Brewster. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Okay, have a discussion.
Oh, yeah, we can, I'm sorry.
My only question is the what ifs. How long are you going to let it sit there if they don't put it in a garbage bag before you take action?
He'll be getting located all day. You know, that's what we've got to work on, is coming up with a plan to go to vacuum it, and I'm looking at probably 90 days. Obviously, but since they were going to pick it up, it's just going to be back and forth to the homeowner.
So you're going to give a 90-day notice to everybody?
That's how I'm going to do it.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Vivins?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Ordinance on first reading is some rezoning requests. We've got about three of those here, I think. First one is amending the zoning map of the city of Loudoun, Tennessee pursuant to 13-7-203 and 13-7-204 of TCA to rezone property located at Cedar Park Drive, tax map 040, parcel 088, and a portion of parcel 085, total of approximately 21.5 acres from C4, interchange commercial district, R3, urban residential district.
I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you. We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? We've had this on a couple of months' agenda, and sending more discussions about this item.
I'm still concerned about the traffic issue, but.
I think that's due.
We need the housing.
We all will be from, you know, whenever things start taking place, but we've still got to wait until we get that issue, and we'll tackle it, and hopefully the state will come on board with us and do what they need to do.
And again, this is first reading, so we still got to go through another month. Any other questions or discussions? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Vivins?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
All right. Next item on first reading is amending the zoning map of the city of Loudoun, Tennessee pursuant to 13-7-203 and 13-7-204 to the TCA to rezone property located at Queener Road, tax map 040, parcel 084.02, approximately 34.9 acres from R1, F1, suburban residential district, floodway district, R3, F1, urban residential district, floodplain district. Again, this has had HOA meetings and meetings, we've discussed it at workshop.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, this puts it up for discussion now. Any discussion about this rezoning request for first reading?
Mr. Pitt, so we're still about a year out on start of that project, correct? So that'll get us closer to, well, I mean, this is just the first reading, but that'll get us closer to Queener Road being finished, right?
It's anticipated by March, groundbreaking, six months of construction, and then home building will be another five to six months before the first residents will be able to live in. Traditionally, they were building in work of 1,015 acres at a time, so you'll be looking at probably, my best guess, once the home building construction starts, you'll be looking at more than a figure built out.
Because, I mean, my main concern, I think, along with the residents over there, is Queener Road, and the shape it's in, and the shape it's going to be in. I do just ask for due diligence on the contractor's part to be cautious with the road and the residents coming and going out of there. And, you know, Highland Avenue, we had great comments from the residents over there saying how wonderful the contractor was to work with them and help them, and I hope we'll see that with your guys. If you just pass that along, that'd be a tremendous help on the part.
Thank you. Any other comments? Again, this is on first reading. It'll sit again in July. Okay, we have a roll call vote, then.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Vivins?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
No.
Councilmember James?
No.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Three to two.
Okay, next item on the agenda is another rezoning request. It's amending the zoning map of the city of Loudoun, Tennessee pursuant to 13-7-203 and 204 to rezone property located, oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one, located at Corporate Park Drive, tax map 32, parcel 05, approximately 73 acres from R1, F1 to C2, F1, highway business district, floodplain district. And I think Mr. Sam Smalling, please come to the podium, he has a presentation, I think, before we discuss it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Sam Smalling. I'm with the Gentry Organization, the developer of opposed RV park, or resort in this case. So as you know, is there a way for me to change up here?
I can try to remove the peak, just holler.
Absolutely. So the next slide will be just a general aerial view of the property. And then as we keep going, just a closer aerial, and we continue. So just some few characteristics of the property, 73 acres. For this development, we're going to have about 3.4 RV or park models per acre, which is substantially lower than industry standard. There is an abundant amount of vegetation on the property currently, and we're going to do our best to preserve what we can. And then for the 10-foot buffer, we would add in what would be needed, but the idea is to preserve as much as we can with the property as is. It's relatively high development budget for this type of development, since it's directly on the lake. Currently, you'll see our conceptual plan. Currently, we're at about 250, maybe just a little bit north of there, in terms of sites, and that includes RV pad sites, park models, glamping, and even some sites for typical tents. So we have an in-house property management team, where we hire local managers from the community. We have cleaning crews, housekeepers, groundskeepers, activity coordinators, all working the park at once, garbage collection weekly to keep the park tidy. After our security guards, cameras located throughout. Manager's apartment is situated kind of dead center in the park, and we have gated entrances where guests and visitors have to sign in and register, as well as a queuing line, so that there's no backup of traffic of people trying to get in. We head to the next slide. As I said, extensive tree conservation will serve as a natural buffer, where there's a minimum 10 feet wide natural buffer along the property lines, and no site, RV or otherwise, will be within 50 feet of the property line. Quiet hours are typically from 10:00 to 6:00 a.m., and then we limit times on trash pickup. However, there's, you know, a dumpster on-site where people can drop off throughout the week and then have one pickup to limit noise. You have a traffic from the ITE, from what we see at our parks, that's relatively high, but typically we have our guests that are coming to stay with us, arriving in the afternoon between 2:00 to 5:00, 2:00 to 6:00, and then when they leave, typically around 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning. We're getting into design now, so here's conceptual site plan. A little difficult to see. On the left side of the property, you've got a number of cabins, which are park models, but they look like cabins in a way, and use the more traditional RV parking kind of in the middle, along with a few more cabins to the north of the page. And then by the water, we have, you know, a nice clubhouse with an infinity pool, some gazebos, boardwalk along the lake, hopefully some docks, we're going to be working with the TVA on that. Pickleball courts, playground, jumping pad for the kids. This is a very family-friendly, this is a vacation, have a resort for families, so it's very kid-friendly with activities and plenty of amenities to serve them, as well as the parents, of course. And you can continue moving on. So here are some conceptual renderings of our clubhouse, and pool, and dock, and gazebos. These are subject to change, but this is the overall look we're going for. I hope to see that boardwalk extended further, both north and south, but this is, you know, the overall feel we're looking for within the resort. Here are three examples of our traditional RV pad sites, different patios, also showing different RVs, and the ability for multiple cars parked there, including guests. So this is what we are not trying to be, you know, we don't want people crammed in there and setting up shop with their own goods, building decks and their own grills, we don't want any of that. And on to the next slide is, you know, more of the feel we're trying to achieve here, where it's really just a place to get away for families. Very high-end, spacious, green, you can kind of stay within your own, you know, family, within your unit, or venture out and mingle with community as much as you want. So here are some examples of the park models I was talking about. And so while they look like cabins, they are technically a form of recreational vehicle. They have wheels in it, you know, they're on wheels 100% of the time, but you kind of cover those up, you know, as you see a little stairway up to the patio there. But these are classified as recreational vehicles, and what these do, it gives people the opportunity, when they don't have an RV, or don't want to go out there and rent an RV and worry about driving that around, they can still come, they can rent one of these out, and, you know, enjoy all the amenities that anyone else would. These are fairly expensive, and, you know, typically rented from $180 to $230 a night. So we don't really see long-term stays. Typically, you see a weekend, maybe a week max, but this is more for the weekend for your.
They fully furnished those?
They are fully furnished by us. Yes. There's some further examples, there's different ranges of them, you know, as I said, $180 to $230, depending on the size, the amount of beds, some of the interiors of them. And these will be cleaned by our cleaning staff after each use, of course. Kind of goes into talking about the park model and how it is classified. Once again, they're all built by their manufacturers to the recreational vehicle standards. They typically don't exceed 400 feet, 400 square feet, excuse me. The states that classify park models as recreational vehicles. And then here are examples of the glamping. So glamping is, a person doesn't want to set up a tent, but they do want to, you know, be more outside and then within nature, but still have kind of an elevated experience. So there's, you know, a king bed, at times there's, you know, a bathroom with running water, and these trend on the same price range as the park models, it's just a different experience for the customer.
Glamorous camping.
Glamorous camping, that's right. Here are some more examples of those. Hardwood floors, and you can kind of design them as you please. And this just shows some basic statistics on the RV industry in recent years. 10 million households now own an RV, 64% growth in campers who camp three-plus times per year. 2017, 74% of RV park vacationers traveled within, no more than 150 miles for their camping vacation. You have a 20% growth in annual camping households from 2014 to 2017, and actually a staggering number of millennials and Gen Xers are now part of the camping community. Shows you RV sales over the last 10 years, steady increase and kind of flattened out in recent years. And then just a little bit about us. Solely owned and operated by Ricky Jenkins since 1989, 350 million plus owned in portfolio. We purchased our first RV park asset in February of 2019, and that was a KOA facility in Colorado Springs. We currently own three, and we have another five within development. And management team has extensive RV park experience. And... team has extensive RV park experience. And that about does the presentation portion. And what I will say, one thing that was briefly covered in the planning and zoning meeting is the park models and the glamping can be considered a temporary structure. And in the RV ordinance that was recently passed, it prohibits temporary structures. Now whether that's temporary structures that we build and maintain versus what a customer would come in and build to join their RV, I guess that's up for a little interpretation. But glamping may be a smaller part of our development here, but as you see, the park model portion is fairly large, not quite at fifty percent, but maybe around forty percent. So we would need to discuss that in terms of the ordinance classification.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Smalling?
Mr. Mayor, I'm making the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. And again, this comes as a unanimous request from the planning commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Again, this is on first reading? Roll call. Any other discussion, questions?
When this passes, when will you start construction?
Ideally, most likely the next spring. If not, as soon as we can, but most likely next spring.
And again, this is, it'll show up next month as well, what's that figure? Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please. Oh, no, I guess we don't need it on this one.
Councilmember Brewster.
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon.
Aye.
Councilmember Vickers.
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smalling, for being here tonight. Now resolutions. First resolution is to ratify the contribution economic development agreement for the expansion and improvement of public work facilities of the water system approved by L U B. This was discussed briefly in the adoption of the agenda. Any other discussion about that? Attorney Frye and Manager Ross can expand on that if we need to.
Again, I want to apologize that this did not make it on the workshop agenda. This is, again, something that we've been working on for several months now. We have worked with our bond counsel, Bassberry Sims, we've worked with the state comptroller's office, and we've also worked with the utility board to make sure that this was the best use of those funds to, you know, to affect future infrastructure of the water department. Some of the safeguards are that none of this money will be spent without L U B's approval. This is not a blank check to IDB. Again, if for whatever reason we're able to obtain additional grants, or if the overall capital project costs come down or are modified, then all that money will go back to the gas department, any money that is not used. And what we're asking the council to do is to ratify this contribution agreement that sets forth what this can be used for, what it can't, and ultimately leaves the ratepayers and L U B, including the gas department and the water department, in better position financially.
Okay. As mentioned, there are some very big projects on the list that require this funding.
Another question you might think of later is, why ten million? Well, we went through an extensive exercise with the gas department to determine how much money it actually needed over the next five to ten years to thrive. And, you know, one of the most expensive things about running a gas department is purchasing the gas, you know, from your broker to then turn around and sell to our customers. So the first thing we did, we set aside, you know, two years, we set aside two years of revenues to be sure that we can make those expenditures. And then we looked at the capital improvements that would be needed over the next five to ten years to keep the system not just up to snuff, but expanded throughout our utility district. And we backed into that number based on, you know, there was a twenty million dollar balance, and we thought that we needed, we needed eight million in that account to safely operate the gas department going forward. And then we put a two million dollar cushion on top of that.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the strategic plan is driving a lot of this as well, correct?
That's correct, yeah. We want to keep water rates as low as possible for our ratepayers.
Where is the oversight on the projects, like the new water line going under the river? I don't see anybody on the IDB board that would even know anything about a water line.
No, that's all L U, it's all L U B, just like any other L U B project. It would be, we'd put out a bid, you know, our engineers would put the plans together, they'd put it out for bid, we would bring it back for the L U B to approve the bids and...
Would our engineers at L U B be the oversight?
Yes, sir. That was set forth in your memo and what was posted on our website, is the money would be transferred on a construction draw basis and only after review and approval of L U B staff.
Yeah, but they're gonna be watching the project the whole time.
We're saying the same thing, sir.
Right. Yeah, it's just like any other construction draw, it would be on a periodic basis.
And there's nothing saying that this has to go to a workshop before it comes to a meeting for approval? There's no...
That's the council's decision.
Yeah.
There's no guidance on that, that we won't be doing anything wrong by?
No, not at all.
Voting on it here, not since your workshop?
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution for this, ratifying this for the utility board?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
No, second motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Item two is removed, so we'll skip down to item three, which is amending the pay classification plan. I think Manager Ross covered this a little bit in the budget discussion.
I did, I covered each and every change to pay classification plan. What's important for the audience to understand, and those watching at home, is you pass a budget, but there's a provision inside our personnel rules that says the council approves headcount and wages. And so there's a document that lists every person that works for the city, as well as what they're paid. And that's reviewed with the city council. This is something you should feel good about, it's transparency. But because those changes that we talked about, to public safety officer pay, as well as the one percent COLA, changes the numbers on those wage scales, we revise everything and then submit it to this body for their approval.
So what this action here is amending that pay classification plan. The money's already been approved in the budget.
There's no hiding money in the city of Loudon.
Okay, do we have a motion to amend the pay classification?
I'll make a motion to amend.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
I'm going to choose not to vote on this due to the fact that it does affect my household.
Okay. So you're accusing yourself, okay. That'll be duly noted. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you for that, Councilmember.
I remember. I didn't remember the terminology, but I remember the saying.
When you watch me. Next item, resolution is approving the additional paving work on Highland Avenue, and I think we're happy to have a good report on that. Manager Ross?
Yeah, we've been here a while, I'm gonna burn through this. There's two lines on the screen, yellow line and red line, one's shorter than the other one. The longer line is an extension of Highland Avenue, the repaving project that's going on now. The longer line was originally quoted at twenty-six thousand and some change, and then the shorter line was quoted at seventeen-five. Ellis Scruggs, our public works director, did a great job going back to Harrison Construction, AKA APAC Atlantic, and negotiated them down even further, and they're going to give us the longer line for eighteen thousand even. So that's an update from your workshop.
Okay, if you haven't driven on it, it's truly nice. Former councilmember Stewart can have a smooth drive all the way from home, all the way to work now. He's been looking forward to that.
I'm making a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Brewster. Do we have a second to amend?
I'll second on it.
Okay. Councilmember James, second? Everybody wants to jump on that.
I just want to make a comment, but I have heard multiple comments from citizens saying that how wonderful the contractors been to work with, they've went above and beyond to help and assist with people coming and going, and they've just been a joy to work with, and that's awesome, so.
Director Scruggs, you can pass it on to APAC.
There's real contact.
Yes.
Okay, we had a motion, have a motion in a second. Any more questions or comments about amending the contract? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Next item is authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty-four F five fifty and dump body for the public works department.
This is not on your workshop, and Public Works Director Scruggs, you know much more about this bed dump system than I, and could you please explain the four thousand dollars we're asking for?
What this is, is a follow-up of a resolution that was passed in January. We discussed a Ford F four fifty at the time. After review, not knowing what the cost difference was, I investigated the difference between a four fifty and a five fifty. It was really essentially a thousand dollars difference. And for that, you get an extra ton of payload capacity. After us hauling asphalt and other materials, it just seemed like a good decision. So we reached out and changed that order. Obviously, with the coronavirus pandemic, vehicles have been on hold, so we have not received that vehicle. So I was holding off on spec-ing and ordering a dump bed for that truck. Well, with this budget cycle becoming to an end, I need to go ahead and get that bed on order. So what this is, is the original plan was, the dealership was actually gonna provide the truck and the bed itself. After review, they decided to back out and only provide the vehicle itself. So this is the actual bed. It's gonna be a hydraulic PTO transmission truck. So this is actually a PTO dump bed. We need that basically for asphalt and rock spreading. Our current vehicles, the hydraulics are a lot slower when they're electric over hydraulic. This will be an actual full hydraulic system. Costs a little more money, it's actually about four thousand dollars over the original dollar amount that was approved back in January. Hence, we bring it for you for the truck and the dump body.
This is from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, correct?
Correct, that's correct. It is a budgeted item.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Brewster. Do we have a second?
I'll second on it.
Councilmember James, seconds. Any questions? As Manager Ross said, we've got Director Scruggs here that could answer all those questions. Seems like a good use of the extra money to get what he needs. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. Right. Better get it ordered. Next item on the agenda is authorizing the maintenance department to obsolete some equipment and parts to be considered surplus, I'm assuming to be sold on gov deals?
Yes, this is upon the completion of inventory, some filters, belts, spark plugs, shocks, lights, brakes, hoses, wiper blades, dry rot tires, et cetera, were all identified by the public works department as not needed, not going to be used, and they're asking permission to put these items on gov deals.
Will they be posted as dry rot tires? Is there a market for that?
No.
Yeah, okay. All right. Do we have a motion to authorize this material to be put on gov deals?
I'll make a motion to do so.
Thank you, Councilmember James. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Brewster. Okay, we have a motion in second. Do we have questions about any of these items for Director Scruggs and his plan to do this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. It's that time of year, we do have some appointments to make. Some of these are appointments that the mayor makes, doesn't need any council approval or action. The first one is the Historic Planning Commission. I'm gonna reappoint Cynthia Ferguson for that position. Also on the Planning Commission, Carly McArthur, I'll reappoint him. And also Planning Commission, Debbie Hines, I'll reappoint her. Three of them, three appointments that need just approval by council, I don't need a motion in a second. Nomination for Recreational Advisory Committee, Amy Millsaps, I'd like to reappoint her. And ask all those in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, Mark, Ms. Millsaps is reappointed. Also on the Recreational Advisory Committee, Eddie Mahia, I do have approval for him. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Him as well, Mark, so he's back on there. Then also on the utility board, I'd like to reappoint Carly McArthur. All those in favor of this appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, Mr. McArthur is appointed. Department reports. Chief Rebecker, we'll start with you, since you're up front here.
Thank you, Mr. Fire. I want to recognize two of our part-time firefighters, you guys come up here. Ms. Hale Udi, a part-time firefighter, and Mr. John Dorsett, a part-time firefighter. They're both local Loudon High School graduates. John's also a Marine Corps veteran. They both joined our department in October, I believe, of last year. And they started their ten-week journey at the Recruit Firefighter Academy in Belle Bucel, Tennessee, which is just below Nashville, I believe it was February seventeenth. And it's supposed to be a ten-week academy. The COVID virus, obviously, they had to postpone the academy for six weeks, I believe. So their academy is actually sixteen weeks long. There's a lot of online training, as well as their regular training. They completed well over four hundred hours of firefighter training, from basic recruit training to advanced firefighter tactics and techniques. And they both successfully graduated June eleventh. They both are certified firefighters now, and they're working part-time firefighters. You'll see them working shifts in our city, in our department. They both received very high parades from instructors out there for their work ethic, their hard work, their determination, and they both took time to help other recruits that were struggling. So they represented our city and our department extremely well. We're extremely proud of them. And as the manager mentioned earlier, there's a waiting list for the police department. The fire department's the same way. I would hope that they both are striving for a full-time position. And we got them highly trained and ready to go in the near future. I just wanted to recognize them before you all.
Thank you. Let's get into it. Thank you, Chief Rebecker, and welcome to the fire department, the new ones. Chief Webb, you have anything to report?
I have to relinquish my time to the gentleman of the park's recreational. You opened that swimming pool this month, so you probably got a lot to say.
It's awful nice of you. Well, turn it right over to you, Director Harold.
Thank you, Chief Webb, that'd be very nice of you. First, I do want to comment about these two young folks right here. It's not just firefighters, it's got ten weeks. Both of them, and they didn't know I was gonna speak tonight about this, both of them have been through the system. I've known both since they were five, six years old, they've played these fast footballs, they've been involved in Loudon athletics, they've been involved in Loudon, they've worked in swimming pools, life guards, they're lifelong dedicated Loudon folks. And I love it, I love to see them, and it's hard to believe that they're even though they're firefighters, and if they have, it just makes your heart feel good when you see someone that's come up through the ranks like that, it's really nice. As Chief Webb did mention, we did open the pool last week with some comments from the public that we needed to open the pool. We haven't had a lot of people to attend. We have a limit of up to fifty capacity, and we have not reached that capacity yet. So I think that's two good signs. One, financially it's draining for us, it's done good, and we're not having the rapids come in from the big cells. But it's also showing that people are kind of aware of what's going on and taking care of themselves and staying home, it's taken a step. So you kind of look at it on both sides of that and think about the options that people have. We've been working with Maribor and Alcoa Parks and Rec, Sweetwater, Water City, and Farrier Parks and Rec, and as we open things, we all get together, we talk about this at least weekly, we talk to city man, Tom Ross, and of course, Dr. Guyner. We put a lot of thought into these things before we do open everything. Everything is opening now except for playgrounds. CDC is still saying that playgrounds need to remain closed. Some are going ahead and opening those playgrounds up, but that's all we like at this time of year. On the starting of Loudoun Municipal Park, I hate to hear you guys in January talking about this project, it is well underway, but we're late getting started because of all the heavy rain, and of course, once we started the side project, it's become very dry, so we are going to have a super high water bill, as I say, we're talking about water rains going up, we're kind of hell of fun with that project as we go forward. We've had some irrigation issues, it's well underway, I have some pictures, and I'll try to present that to you next month, from the time we started to where it's at now, and those of you that have seen it, it looks very professional, it feels super green, it's turned out real nice, and it's working the guys to death to try and keep it going, but it's really been a good project. We have, like I say, we're opening up everything, Food Truck Friday starts the first Friday in July, a big roadside park, livestock will be back open, shelters are open, there's a lot of restrictions, we place signage in all the parks, ask them with assistance from, of course, the city manager, Ty Ross, and attorney pride of what these signs need to say, and basically, it's easy to run risk. People just need to be aware that, you know, the virus is not easily containable, as you go in, the person in front of you may have contaminated that area, and we can't come behind there, every single person that comes into the park and clean those areas. But we're seeing a lot of easy junk on those facilities.
Okay, do you want to give me? About the Fourth of July parade, I don't know if you might?
Yes, yes, the Fourth of July parade, it's planned, the lineup's at nine o'clock on Carter Street, the parade's at 10:00, but there will not be any festival this year at the park, or knocking on the fireworks. We talked about that, so we do ask the people to stay in their cars, and again, talking with Kingston and other committees, a lot have canceled those as well, thank her, a couple of shelters are still going on in the area, but I hope you enjoy the Fourth of July.
Thank you, Mark. Director Scruggs, you have anything else to?
Just express our appreciation for council and Manager Ross, for your continued support of our department, in the right direction.
Director Brown, you have anything? Ms. Curtis, you?
I would like to say thank you for your assistance in getting the budget passed. I accepted this position August 1 of last year, I knew the budget process was going to be fun, I had no idea how much fun it would be with COVID and everything else that went on, but there was a lot of hours that went into preparing that 40-page document, but whenever you drive down Highland Avenue and you see pavement that's fresh, it's really cool to know that that all went through this budget process, and you know that there are projects like Queen of Rose, that we're going to see material changes in the next year, and that's all wrapped up in this budget. So it goes from the paper to the pavement, it's really cool to be part of that process, thank you.
Thank you in your department for the work you all done.
Nicole, can I ask you a question? I was going through the audit, just now got time to go through the audit. We've had serious findings on two items. It's the same thing's happened two years in a row, are there any way we're going to head that off this year?
Are you referring to the work orders on the electric department? That was remedied last fall, when we added an additional accountant to the accounting department, and significant progress has been made with, there was 1,500 work orders that had accumulated over a 20-year period and had not been closed properly. As of today, 1,400 of those have been closed, and they will be cleaned up before this year end is out. Those are some of the changes that, we've talked before about the organizational change, that is a significant one. That was huge, that was for our electric department on the utilities, and I am proud to report that we have made tremendous progress on that item in the last nine months.
You're confident it won't happen again this year?
No, it will not happen again.
That's along with the AMI installation as well?
That's correct, that is correct. No, that is a tremendous success for our department.
Okay, any other department head that I might have missed? All right, council member reports. Councilmember Vivens, Solid Waste, do you have any?
Solid Waste had their meeting, it was very interesting. Most of you may have read, some may not have any idea, Sandtech is in negotiations to be purchased by a company called Republic. Republic has a different idea of how things are going to be done and ran. So we have ceased contract negotiations at this time. Honestly, since they are being in the process of probably being purchased, the contract amendment couldn't go through anyway. So contract amendments have been ceased, we would need to know more about this company before we would extend their time period here. But we have requested that the CEO come to our meetings, or at least some representative from Sandtech or Republic come to our meeting and discuss these changes with us, because our council, our commission was not notified of that before it hit the papers.
Wow, that'd probably raise some eyebrows, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Dixon, you have anything from the Planning Commission?
We do. We got a few from the Historical Zoning Commission. Clayton Paynehold represented the property owners for 619 Mulberry Street for a roofing project, for which it was, they were wanting to use a metal roof, that was approved unanimously by the board. Then Clayton Paynehold representing Dr. Stimson for a new signage in front of what used to be McGill Click Funeral Hall, that signage was for his seashell museum, that was also approved. Then Jeff Harris, the mayor, represented Casa of Tennessee Valley for taking the siding off the front of the building to show the brick, front of the building, which was the original brick. So then, on the Regional Planning Commission, rezoning request was unanimously approved by the board, rezoning 34.9 acres on Queen of Road, and then the rezoning request was unanimously approved by the board of zoning the 73 acres, from R1 F1 to C2 F1, habitat TJO Storage Construction, that was approved. The subdivision request divided three lots into one by Thomas and Barbara Green at 1629 Oak Street, that was approved. Site plan request at Oak Street LLC, 706 RPM Drive, from M2 Heavy Industrial, approximately 2.2 acres, which will employ 40 employees, that was approved by the board also. That's all.
All right, busy month in the planning department.
It was.
Councilmember James, you have anything from the courthouse grant ratification committee to report?
There's anything going on, nobody's told me about it.
Okay, all right. Recreation Advisory Committee, Councilmember Brewster, does it report? Okay, the next item on the agenda is closing comments, and I'm going to, if you see these individuals, these are work anniversaries in our utilities and city department, we scan everywhere from three years to 32 years, which is, I think, a tribute to our employees and to our organization. In the Loudoun Police Department, Kent Russell's celebrating 23 years this month. Megan Holt, 20 years, city of Loudoun. Yeah, you didn't know that, did you? You didn't know it was that long. Right. And also with the Loudoun Police Department, Sam Harrison, 16 years. So chief, tell them we appreciate them, and this month they're celebrating their anniversary. Also with utilities, old timer is David Burkholtz, 32 years. Travis Williams, 21 years. Missy Cooley, 14 years. Rodney Smallin, 13 years, and Jamie Miller, 11 years. And I guess the newbie is Ty Ross, three years. Thank you, Ty Ross, for your service, three years. I think it's important that we celebrate what our employees contribute to our city and utilities, and it's not a small accomplishment to be standing somewhere 32 years and multiple years on some of these. So if you see these individuals, and I want to try to bring these up every month, those that are celebrating their anniversary, I think Vice Mayor Dixon has also got some reason to celebrate for some more.
We have, I guess this is the first time we ever done anything like this.
It is.
I guess everyone's had a birthday in the month of June. Police Department, Brian Jenkins, I tell you your age, but I ain't going to. Mike Newman, Courtney Giles, Tracy Harris. The fire department, Calvin Gardner, Luke Martin, Andrew Hughes. In the utility department, Nick Dixon, Dalton Giles. Water plant was Mike Eblen. The wastewater plant was Chuckie Hughes. Wayne Kettner, James Miller, Brad Parks. And customer service was Don Watson. Administration department was Ty Ross. That's all.
Okay, I think it's another accomplishment to celebrate their birthdays and just wish them happy birthday this month. We'll try to bring you that each month as well. Any other closing comments, Vice Mayor Dixon, you have? Any other closing comments?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Vivens, you have any closing comments?
No.
Councilmember James, you have any closing comments?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Brewster, you have any closing comments?
I do. This was inadvertently left off the agenda, we discussed it in workshop.
No, we can't add anything to the agenda?
Yes, we can.
No, well, we?
I'm going by, Jeff, let me speak. I'm going by Robert's Rule. We discussed this in workshop, and at this time, I want to make a motion that we do split the position and hire a city manager planner, and Ty Ross assume the duties as a utility board manager.
Want to appeal to our attorney?
I put it in the form of a motion.
To add anything to the agenda at this point, after the agenda has been adopted, it takes a motion?
I read Robert's Rules before I got here.
Let me speak now.
Okay.
If it has to have a motion and a second after the agenda's been adopted, and a unanimous vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
That is according to Robert's Rule's order.
That's correct.
No, it's not.
He is our parliamentarian, hold on, well, hold on. He is our parliamentarian.
Mr. Mayor, you are the chair, it's up to you to rule on Mr. Brewster's request.
I think it's out of order, and we've approved the agenda, we've adopted the agenda, it takes a motion and a second and a unanimous vote to add it at this point.
You can ask for a second.
Is there a second to his motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, it takes a unanimous vote to add this to the agenda.
I'm not adding it, I made the motion.
Yeah, you made a motion, he made a second, it takes a unanimous vote to add it.
I'm not adding.
Yeah, you are.
You left it off the agenda.
No, I didn't leave it off, yeah, because there was no other support for that in the workshop, he was the only one that commented about it at all.
I was the carrier of the bill, but you didn't ask for a vote or any other?
You don't vote in a workshop.
That's right.
You don't vote in a workshop.
So if the city councilman can't bring stuff to, and put it on the agenda, why are we here?
He can, but there was not enough support for it to put it on.
It don't take a unanimous vote to get something put on the agenda.
If you weren't on the agenda, you should have put it on.
I make a motion, we split the position.
You've made the motion, we've got a second, it takes a unanimous vote to add it, roll call vote.
Councilmember Brewster?
Yes.
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Vivens?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
No.
Mayor Harris?
No, motion fails.
I challenge your ruling, Attorney.
Okay, excuse me, Attorney Frye, is that handled correctly, in your opinion?
In my opinion.
Okay.
I challenge your opinion.
It should have been, it should have been added at the beginning of the, when the adoption, when the agenda was put up for adoption.
Robert's Rule says you can add it at any time.
Yes, Manager Ross?
There's always a tomorrow, Kent.
Okay.
There's always tomorrow. And the next time it will be added, will it not, sir?
Yes.
And when we don't mistake, will they serve?
No, Mr. James?
I understand that, sir. I want everybody in this room to understand that, sir.
If everyone wants to?
We don't like mistakes, do we, sir?
No, sir.
But if they're accidental or coincidental, it doesn't matter. A mistake is a mistake, it is what it is.
If that wants, if you need to put, if that wants to be on the workshop agenda for July, put on the workshop for July.
It was on for June.
It was not on the workshop for June, you brought it up, it was not on the workshop for June meeting. If you want it on the June meeting, July meeting workshop, request that to be on there. It'll be discussed.
I request it to be on there.
Okay. Any other business?
Sir?
Yes.
Any public hearing scheduled, please, do you want them at 15:00 and 6:15, 6:20, 6:25 respectively?
Yes, yes. Do you have anything else that you have? Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, please, yeah.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank y'all for coming.